Call to order, the meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, seven o'clock regular meeting for March 17th, 2015. And I ask Commissioner Bowles to open us with invocation. Everyone, please.
Okay. Bow with me, please. Our gracious heavenly Father, we praise your holy name, Lord. We give you thanks and we give you praise because you alone are worthy. Thank you, Lord. Lord, we ask that you would watch over us as we see after the business of Iredell County this evening, Lord. We ask you to give us wisdom as we decide these issues, Lord. We thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please rise for the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to wish everyone a happy St. Patrick's Day. Check the person next to you. If they deserve a pinch, go ahead and get that out of the way. Commissioners have already taken care of that. Okay. At this time...
Let me keep your hands straight.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one adjustment to the agenda under closed session. I'd like to add an economic development item, and that's under General Statute Reference 143, 318, 11A4.
Okay. So noted. Motion to approve the adjustment of the agenda.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. At this time, we will have an opportunity to recognize two of our public servants who are retiring after many years of devoted service to Iredell County Sheriff's Department, Ricky Eads and Robin Miller. I want to welcome all the family members of the Miller family that is here. And if you all could come forward, then we will have a couple of presentations.
You know, Rick began his career at Iredell County Sheriff's Department in 1994. He'd already been in the law force about 10 years prior to that. He started his program at the road, and I was trying to see if I would have the opportunity to occasionally give some of the folks that he brought in. So, you were a busy guy. He transferred later on to through ranks as a deputy in narcotics investigations and then went into the dare program. You know, the alcohol, the drug reduction program, the education program was extremely important. When you look at our jail population, 80% of those incarcerated are there because of some kind of fraud. And so, it's a problem that cuts across our society and I appreciate it very much. The county appreciates the work you did to make a difference in young people's lives. It taught in fact, there were 6,000 kids, and that's quite a legacy. Rick advanced to become the captain of crime prevention and training, detention training. And so, you've got some big shoes to build, but make sure that we're able to continue to march. He is, I believe, likely to return in some capacity on schedule that is more than additional. Okay. On behalf of citizens of Iredell County and the board of commissioners, I'd like to present this plaque, Richard S. Eads, appreciation for your years of dedicated service to Iredell County. Thank you. Now, this is your opportunity to... I have appreciated my time here with the sheriff's office and dealing with the folks in the community. We have outstanding county, we have a lot of good folks, a lot of county commissioners and so forth. I put a lot of faith in them, as you do, to the sheriff's office and them as well as far as we're concerned in our county, and I do appreciate my time here. Thank you.
He started with the county back in January of 1986, so he's been around the block a few times. He started off as a detention officer in the Iredell County Jail, moved on up to be a road deputy. He's been in the patrol division, ended up as a ship lieutenant in the patrol division. You know, these guys on the road, both Ricky and Robin, encounter tremendous variety of circumstances. They have to exercise loads of discretion in enforcing the law, finding the right response to produce the desired result, and they just become experts in human relations and helping people become better people and protecting the citizens of this county. Thank you so much for all that you've done, and thank you to the Miller family and his wife, Thea, who I did confirm has a 30-year-long honey-do list for you to start working on. And then, when he's ready to either complete that list or you just want to get him out from underfoot, then I'm sure the sheriff's department would love to have him come back in a part-time capacity as well. I tell you what, we really take advantage of the experience of our retired officers as they come back, and they know the lay of the land better than anybody out there. So, thank you again, Robin. And your plaque reads, in a similar vein, presented to Robin W. Miller in appreciation for your years of dedicated service to Iredell County. Thank you on behalf of a grateful citizenry.
It's been an honor and a great time to serve the county. I went as a kid, and like I was, when I started, I was 21, just barely turned 21. And you start as a child, and then you kind of leave as... I'm not really old, but I feel older than I am, but I'm not really old. Season, that's a good way of putting it. But you know, you spend, when you're going to leave your life's work, it's like I was talking to some folks. I have done this job longer than I was alive before I came here. So, you have a lot of opportunities, like you spoke of, sir, where you deal with folks and you help folks, and you have that rare opportunity in law enforcement to make that difference that no one else can make, because you help folks when they are in their worst time of crisis, and you can make that intervention where nobody else has that chance. And that's an honor, and I have enjoyed it immensely. And it's, the thing about the sheriff's office is it takes the whole department. It's not just one person, and it takes the whole department. And I've been honored to work with some great people. Chief Byers made a statement when we were talking, and I thought about it, which is very true. There's a lot of old guys that trained us, and they left, and they're the ones that raised us. And now, he said, when I told, I turned in my letter of resignation or retirement, he said, "Now, all the guys I grew up with are leaving." So, you know, the ones of us that grew up are now leaving together, because we grew up together. I remember when Ricky and I were young as we could be and still after doing that. So, I want to thank the county and thank everyone, and I'm truly honored.
And to have the last word, I know that Sheriff Darren Campbell couldn't be here tonight. He had to be in Raleigh, otherwise he was planning to be here. But in his stead, to close things out, I want to pass things over to his representative.
And I'm really humbled just to be on the stage with these guys. I mean, they've got 50 years of experience combined in law enforcement and to the citizens of Iredell County, and so I'm really humbled just to even be here. And I apologize on behalf of the sheriff for not being able to be here tonight. He wanted me to be sure and send his regrets. Just a few brief, very brief words about Robin in particular. I think one of the best testimonies of a person, a supervisor, and the kind of job that they've done throughout their career is that in their absence, that things go on. And last night, I worked with your road squad, and they went seamless. Those folks knew exactly what to do, and you had taught them that. And so, you may not be there riding around in a patrol car anymore, but your legacy still lives on through the people you've taught this career and this job. And so, we thank you, humbly thank you for your service to the sheriff's office. Ricky, on the other hand, is... Rick was a spoke, let me tell you, at the sheriff's office. He was definitely a spoke in our wheel. When you needed something done, you went to see Ricky Eads. He's one of those people who will help you get things done, and we're really missing you, Rick. And I would like to just call attention again to something Commissioner Mallory said. I mean, just imagine 6,000 children that this man taught dare to and the kind of impact that you had in those lives and in those children's lives. I mean, those children that you taught back in 94, 95, they've got their own children now, and so your legacy lives on too. We thank you, have tremendous amount of respect for you, your family, and on behalf of the sheriff's office and Sheriff Campbell, if we can ever help you, please don't hesitate to stop in and say hello. All right?
Thank you. There are none this evening. We'll proceed into public hearings. I will now call into public hearing into order for consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Aqua and...
Mr. Chairman, we don't see anybody from State's for Regional Development, so I'll go through their memo if that's okay. The purpose of this hearing is for consideration of an economic development incentive ranging between $63,556 and $95,334 over a five-year period based on an investment ranging between $4 million and $6 million in Iredell County.
Is there anyone that would like to be heard on this matter? I don't have anyone listed to speak. Any comments or from the board? Then I'll declare this public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer the motion that we grant an economic incentive ranging from $63,556 up to $95,334 over a five-year period based on an economic investment of between $4 and $6 million in Iredell County.
Commissioner Johnson's made a motion. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, open a public hearing for consideration of an economic development incentive for Project DBT.
Again, this is a consideration of an economic development incentive ranging between $95,334 and $127,112 over a five-year period based on an investment ranging between $6 million and $8 million in Iredell County, and this will create 40 jobs with estimated wages of approximately $40,000.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? We don't have anyone listed to speak. Any comments, commissioners? I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this amount of money of $95,334 between that and $127,112 for a five-year period based on an investment ranging between $6 and $8 million in Iredell County.
Motion has been made. Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Declare this public hearing open for consideration of a proposed issuance of up to $30 million in education revenue bonds for the benefit of Pine Lake Preparatory, Inc. We have Mr. Chris Terrell is here to speak on that matter.
Thank you for having me tonight. Just wanted to speak briefly on the ERF bonds that we're presenting to you. I want to make you, I think the county commissioners are aware of this, but I want to make it aware for public that this is not something that is going to be a tax liability on any of the citizens of Iredell County. There's no liability to the county government. All liability is with Pine Lake Prep, which is a nonprofit charter school.
Are there any questions for Mr. Terrell? We did have the opportunity to delve into this at some length last meeting prior to putting this on for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that desires to speak on this matter? None? Any comments, questions? Okay. Declare the public hearing closed, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the issuance of up to $30 million in education revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority for the benefit of Pine Lake Preparatory, Inc.
Commissioner Robertson's made a motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We now move on to administrative matters. I believe everything except for one item, that's memo number 10 in reference to the Budget Amendment Number 26, has been placed on a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Smith, if you could lay out the issues relative to the Budget Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request from the Finance Department. Basically, this is on behalf of the county commissioners based on the action that was taken at the winter planning retreat, and this is for approval of Budget Amendment Number 26 to appropriate fund balance for capital projects. And in your packet, or in your packet, you have a spreadsheet that details the amounts that we are talking about tonight, and Susan Robertson, our Finance Director, is going to walk you through that information.
Thank you. Thank you. At the winter planning retreat, we presented to you a capital improvement plan that goes, starts in 2015 and runs through 2021. And the projects are out that are considered priority are outlined by year and what those projects would accomplish. Currently, the county has two active capital project funds. One is the jail and courts capital project, and the other was a future facilities capital project fund. Both of those capital projects have been funded in past years with excess revenues with the intent of getting our plans in order and continuing to accumulate funds to construct those projects for county facilities. To date, there's $4,250,000 in the jail capital project fund, and there's $1,169,000 in the future facilities capital project fund. And at our meeting a few weeks ago, we talked about the balance of the county's unassigned general fund balance. We are at a rate that we have not seen ever, and those funds can be used to accumulate additional funds in the capital projects so we can get started sooner rather than later and also decrease the amount of borrowed funds that may have to go into these projects. As we presented at the winter planning meeting, we can use $12,873,000 of unassigned general fund fund balance and still maintain a very healthy 20% unassigned general fund balance. And that's 20% of the revised FY15 budget. The board instructed us to create a budget amendment to move $12,873,000 and split it between our two top priority projects, with $6,765,000 going as a deposit into the jail capital project fund, bringing the total available to $11,016,000. The balance of the amount available for appropriation, $6,107,000, is recommended to go into the future facilities capital project fund, and I'm also asking you to rename that as the public safety complex capital project fund. As identified at the winter planning meeting, the public safety complex will combine the fire marshal's office, emergency medical services, ECOM, and emergency management under one roof and provide much-needed space, especially that ECOM and EMS so desire and So, I'd ask that the board approve this budget amendment to move these funds from the general fund and also to adopt an amended jail capital project fund to recognize the additional funding as well as to adopt an amended future facilities capital project fund, changing that to the public safety complex project fund and recognize the additional funding in that one as well. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions for Ms. Robertson?
The fact that we're drawing down the fund balance to 20%, I know we've got, you know, we have approved the bond referendum and bonds were issued recently to get started on those projects. Will this affect any of the issuance of bonds? Will this impact in any way the school bond projects that are several years away from beginning?
I don't think that it will, because we disclosed this information to all the ratings agencies, Moody's, Fitch, Standard &amp; Poor's, that the county's policy had been, it's not adopted, but the policy had been in the past to keep it at least 18%, and that we did have some additional projects coming up and that we were going to recommend that it not go below 20. And as you know, Moody's increased our credit rating with this last issue.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of remarks if I could.
Thank you.
Let me say that I am in support of this request. I believe it's the right thing to do at this point in time. Having been here a while, I've found that good people enjoy the process of being held accountable. And at our retreat a few days ago, I want to say in the 20-plus years I've been here, I've never been prouder of a group of people that I've ever had the opportunity to work with than I was Friday when they made the presentation for this public safety complex. I expressed some of my skepticism at the beginning of those proceedings, and I'll have to say at every point in the process, they demonstrated that they were completely prepared for that presentation. There was not a question in my mind that did not go unanswered. There was not a justification that was asked for that was not given. And I wanted to say that publicly. For us to get to this point, though, there's a lot of folks have been at work a long time. And the first ones that I'll mention, I mean, among many others, are EMS staff. They've been working in less-than-ideal conditions for a while. As you know, last year, Mr. Clor and his folks came forth with an idea to begin this project, and they would pay us back out of the specialty services division, but we weren't comfortable with the level of fund balance that we had on hand at that time. Never heard a word of complaining. They went back and continued to do their job. I'd like to add further, the EMS staff, you know, they began the special services unit at the same time that New Care left, so not only did they go in business in one aspect, they had to expand another aspect almost simultaneously. They never faltered. They never failed to do anything we asked them to do. Even on top of that, having done it, they turned a profit. That profit is going to help pay for this building, and those folks are to be commended. The third one I'd like to say is the jail staff. They've been working in less-than-ideal conditions for a long time, and we're to the point where I think that while this won't build the jail, it does give them the confidence to hang on that help is on the way, that it is our intent to alleviate the conditions in that jail. And finally, our line item budget managers in the county. If they didn't effectively manage their line items and their budgets every day, with the consequence being at the end of the year that they turn money back in, even with the policy of this board, we would not have the money on hand that we have, and we would not have the money to do this, and there'd be congratulation. I often poked fun at David Salibi when he first came to work here. I said, "David, your job is to make me look good." Well, a lot of times, we sit up here and congratulate ourselves for a job well done, but we can't do it without good people. And we've got some good people working for us who got us to this point, and I congratulate them.
Any other comments? Well, I would like to pile on to Commissioner Johnson's remarks, the presentations that were made this last winter retreat, and all of the deliverables that we asked for. And to give you a little bit of a background about the capabilities of the staff that is here in Iredell County, you know, so often we feel like we have to look to a consultant from outside the county to come here and dispense knowledge that we don't have to be able to make decisions and to design buildings and to figure out what is best for this county. Well, that consultant came back and said to do what you wanted to do, which was to consolidate all of these functions that were housed in four different locations into one, all of whom worked together and in a common support of our emergency system and our response capability. capability. That they were going to need a building somewhere around 56,000 square feet. Well, our employees of this county sharpened their pencils and went back and forth and back and forth and found ways to reduce that footprint to somewhere around 37,000 square feet and accomplished the same mission. And that's just highly commendable, very impressive, and it's the kind of, you know, cost-effectiveness and efficiencies that we look to get from the people that work in this county who have the best understanding of the needs of our citizens. So I want to also thank all those who participated and those who every day are out executing those missions in support of our citizens.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, there's, just if I can add in one point that y'all have not made, if I could just by way of explanation a bit, both of these, let's see, I've been on this board for 10 years, both addressing the ECOM and EMS situation and dealing with the jail were issues on the day I was sworn in for the very first time. And so we have struggled with competing priorities for building needs the entire time that I've been here. And some people, you know, some people can phrase it kicking the can down the road or whatever, but in essence, what this board has done and previous boards have done and the boards before I came on had done was basically tried to balance and delay things that could be delayed so that we could take care of the most pressing needs first. And I know that it was said that, well, our board, maybe we were feeling generous or a bit in a spending mood. No, these are long, these have been long-term problems that, especially with ECOM, we cannot kick down the road anymore. And I think as far as the jail goes, for many years, we've been a bit on borrowed time. Neither of these things are going to break ground next week, okay? We still have to figure out how we're going to fund them and in the case of the jail, how do we operate it? So there's still a lot of heavy lifting to do, but this is a process that has been ongoing for 10 years, for 10 years, and it's been very deliberate in how we've done it. I think we've been very careful, but there's only so much longer that you can put off addressing some of these needs. And I think we can argue about how much we should have done or when we should have done it and the debate will be on minor points, but I think on the big points, we've all agreed and I think we're moving in the right direction here for sure. And just finally, I think if nothing else relative to the jail, it is an overt sign that we hear you, okay? So, thank you.
Any other comments? Then we will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we transfer from the general fund balance the amount of $12,873,225 with the transfers as follows. $6,765,725 to the jail capital project fund and $6,107,500 to the public safety complex capital project fund. Having made that motion, I'll say this, this does take us down to the 20% fund balance, which I think should be maintained until we begin to see property taxes increase something closer to historical levels. As I say, I'm doing the Ben Bernanke thing. If it looks better, we'll ratchet things down a little bit, but I think that's a good place to be until the vicissitudes of this economy kind of smooth out a little bit.
I think a motion has been made. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. There are no announcements of any vacancies on any boards or commissions. We do have one appointment to a board or commission through the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Mr. Bill Todd has agreed to continue to serve. Is there a motion to nominate Bill Todd by acclamation to serve on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would nominate Mr. Bill Todd and put him in by acclamation.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Bowles. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? There being none, we'll now move into our public comment period that is normally held on the second meeting of the month. We do have one individual, Mr. Steve Essick, who has signed up to be heard. If you'd please approach the podium and...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to stand up for the members of the board.
Okay, please.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I can't put my shoes on in three minutes. I'll make a statement in that amount of time. I've spent the past nine months conducting a personal research project with the old Davis Hospital. The paperwork that I've given you...
Would you pull the microphone up a little bit? I'm having... There you go.
Okay. Past nine months, I've spent researching the Davis Hospital situation. What you have there are about 50% of the results of my research. I have a proposal in there to remedy the situation that will not cost the county any money, it will not cost the city any money, it will remediate the situation and be a benefit to both the county and the city. However, I do not wish to go into specifics. I prefer that you look over the material and if you need more information from me, I'd be more than happy to provide it to you. I just didn't want to go into any specifics until the board has had an opportunity to look at the materials that I have presented to them.
Mr. Essick, thank you very much. This is, looks like a very well-researched issue and I know it's an issue that many citizens are concerned about and we will without fail review and get back with you concerning our questions or feedback and appreciate your involvement as a concerned citizen to address issues. And I know this isn't the only issue that you've, but you know, that's what we depend on is an engaged citizenry to make this democracy work and we thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity for me to present that to you. There's a lot there, but I think you'll find it very interesting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Although there's no one else signed up for the public comment period, is there anyone present that would like to have the opportunity? Is there any new business to come before the commission? County manager's report, I think, is a little thin tonight.
Nothing to report tonight.
I think that's a record. At this time, we will be going into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318.11, ...